Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for May 1st, 2018. If we could call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Luce?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Mokel?
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda, any changes, corrections, additions, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah? Uh, Councilor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second by Councilor Mokel for their discussion, 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 all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, consent agenda, next item, are there any changes, additions, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Councillors? Councilor Lehman?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilor Whiting or Mokel?
Yes.
One of us.
Yep, Ty.
Yes, Ty, pick.
Ty?
Before we, I have a motion, a second on the table, before we vote on the consent agenda, we will have it read into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, these are consent agenda items for May 1st of 2018. 4A1 approves the minutes of the April 17th, 2018 meeting. 4A2 approves suspension of city code 114.11 for the alleyway between Shakopee Brew Hall located at 124 First Avenue East and Turtle's Bar and Grill located at 132 First Avenue East on Tuesdays, May 22nd through July 24th for cornhole tournaments. 4A3 adopts resolution number R2018-TAC-056, which closes the 2007B Improvement Bonds 30-40 Debt Service Fund. 4A4 approves the application and grants a tobacco license to Nicolette Tobacco located at 185 First Avenue East. 4B1 adopts resolution number R2018-TAC-019, which approves the amendment of the Shakopee Fire Department Relief Association bylaws, including a pension benefit increase. 4C1 approves appointment of listed individuals to serve on the Parks Recreation Trails and Open Space Steering Committee. 4C2 adopts ordinance number 02018-TAC-051, which approves a rezoning and preliminary and final plat of Countryside Second Edition. 4C3 adopts resolution number R2018-TAC-046, which approves the development of property at 12495 Marystown Road for single-family residential development. 4D1 declares six forfeited vehicles held by the police department as surplus property and authorizes their proper sale or disposal. And finally, 4E1 approves the suspension of city code 130.45, which allows County Road 83 and Fourth Avenue Project contractors to perform work from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on weekdays and 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Saturdays through October 5th of 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. The consent agenda has been read into the public record, I have a motion and a second, there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes, thank you. Moving ahead to item five, now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come before this council on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
And you have to kind of speak into the mic.
Okay, I'm Madison Boots, 1856 Omega Drive, Shakopee, Minnesota.
Just go.
We are a team of youth from Shakopee High School who are organizing to raise awareness that the climate crisis has put our futures at stake. We are part of a national youth climate advocacy and, and, and organization called I Matter, founded by young people who are passionate about this issue and are determined to do everything we can to ensure that the crisis is solved within our lifetimes. We are here, we are one of many groups of youth leaders across the country who are organizing to hold our communities accountable to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to levels that ensure a healthy planet for our generation and all who will follow. Envision 2040 has recently came into my classroom and brought to our attention the efforts they are putting in to encourage young people to move to our city. We are, as a community, would like to help. Many businesses have notices, noticed, noticed the shift to a sustainable culture and have put in many different protocols and innovation to create an eco-friendly company. We can do that, too. We can give our city an advantage by implementing a more sustainable culture such as a climate inheritance resolution. Our future is threatened because of climate change, and 87% of millennials are personally concerned about it. We have gathered over 275 signatures from students at our school who are supporting our efforts. The creation of a climate action plan could have a large impact in the desire for young people to move here. The petition reads, "We students from Shakopee High School join with the youth of Shakopee to hold our community accountable to create a climate action plan that reduces greenhouse gas emissions to levels that ensure a healthy planet for our future. This should, city shall take upon itself to put the affirmative actions in place with the well-being of future generations in mind. The input of local youth shall be accounted for in this process. I submit to you our petition." Scientists have said that to avoid the worst of global climate change, we need to keep the level of co- carbon dioxide in the atmosphere at 350 parts per million, but because of an increasing use of fossil fuels, the levels are already at 400. Never before in human history has CO2 concentration been as high as it is now. The economic and environmental disruptions are already being felt globally and in our own community. If we do nothing to change, the CO2 levels in the atmosphere will increase to 500 ppm by 2050. To continue to do nothing puts my whole generation and those who follow at risk. This is not the planet we want to inherit. In 2017, James Powell published a large analysis finding a 99.94 consensus, consensus about human-caused climate change. The scientists have been clear, further delay puts all children and future generations at risk to inherit the worst consequences of climate crisis. But the scientists also tell us that there is still a narrow window of time to change this story. If we begin reducing our global output of climate warming greenhouse gases by at least 6% every year, starting now, and removing carbon from the atmosphere through things like reforestation and soil management, we, it is possible to restore balance to our atmosphere by the end of this century. I am hopeful that we in this community can commit to doing everything we can do to bring this reforestation for the sake of our generation and all who will follow. We are presenting a youth climate report, report card to you tonight. We are giving adults report cards, but we, we highlight the gap between what our city is doing today and what would be needed to truly protect the planet for our future. The report card was created through advisors in I Matter and local governments for sustainability and Rocky Mountain Institute. There are four sections to the report card which ask these questions. Does our city have a climate action plan to sufficiently reduce emissions in the time? And what percent of our, our energy is renewable? Are we reducing the amount of waste we generate, increasing the amount that is composted or recycled? And are we doing anything to remove the main cause of climate change, excess carbon dioxide, from the atmosphere with things like more trees and green spaces? Plus, a city gets a bonus half grade for having youth involved in setting climate-related policies. The youth climate report cards are based on real data we gather from Shakopee Public Utilities. We would like to thank MMPA and John Crooks for providing this information for us. We evaluated our city based on concrete actions we have taken as a community and goals we have set to get a series, to get serious about this urgent problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is where I step in, um, I'm Adam Schneider, I live on 968 Busen G-Curve. So first, I'd like to start by recognizing the city by the amazing job that they've done so far, especially in terms of the Envision 2040 Plan. However, for the following reasons, we received these grades on the report card, don't worry, I'll try to be light with this, I know how it feels to be on the receiving end. So, the first section, the climate plan, unfortunately, we failed that because our city currently does not have one. Renewable energy is our best grade, and it is outstanding, and it shows real promise on how this can go through. We got an A+ because 23% of our energy currently comes from renewables, and it has increased greatly over the past few years. In terms of waste, we received a D because the percentage of recycled material has actually gone down over the past few years, and the amount of waste created by, per person, has gone up. Then, for carbon removal, also enough because Shakopee currently does not have a plan put in place to, uh, remove the car, carbon from the atmosphere, and unfortunately, we also do not get the extra credit points of youth engagement. So overall, on the report card, our grade was a D, and all of this information, more including a more detailed explanation on how, on how we were graded and can be found in the youth climate report. We hope that this council and the city as a whole will take the initiative and take measures and create a climate action plan soon. This task may seem daunting, but is entirely possible. Many cities across the United States, notably Burlington, Vermont, Greensburg, Kansas, and Aspen, Colorado, have already developed, developed the ability to run on 100% renewable energy. And then, many other cities have also taken the steps in creating the climate action plan, and they plan on running on 100% renewable energy by 2040, most notably San Francisco, and then also the nearby St. Louis Park. And then we also have a few other, uh, friends in other cities, yesterday, Minnetonka, actually just had a presentation on this, and their city council seems pretty open to it, so yay. And then, in addition, we also have the executive summary of the St. Louis Climate Action Plan with us, do you want to hand? So once again, we'd just like to say that we hope that the council will cross generational barriers and work with us, the youth of the community, to take the initiative to defeat the daunting challenge that is climate, climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also drafted a resolution, so we'll hand these.
We also have to sign and write.
I have a question, so it looks like you had for, um, your renewable energy, you went to our local utility and asked, got some information, that's a great resource. On the wayside, did you contact Republic Services?
Yes, the reason why we got such a bad grade in that, um, segment was because we could not find the information, we were told that it was confidential, and we didn't really know why, so we called around and tried to get other places, and we got deferred fi- five, six times before we could actually get the information, and then we weren't able to. So, if we could get that information, we could improve the grade in that section.
I believe we just had a, a report.
A report.
Mr. Reynolds?
We actually have some of the highest recycling rate in the Twin Cities area, so we'll be more than happy to have that grade adjusted.
We could get a retail.
Yeah. We actually got praise for that.
Also, for youth involvement, no rating, but I see a pretty strong support here, a nice report card that they, a report that they gave us, I'll withhold the nice part, but, uh, yes, I think this is all very good, interesting information.
Mayor, a couple of comments. First, I think the, the facts are in dispute on scientific data proving whether climate change is man-made or, or cyclical, and
Here we go.
Yep, and, and what's happened is, since there's two opposite sides on this issue, it's become a political instead of a factual-based issue, which is unfortunate. But nonetheless, according to your report card, we've, we've made efforts regardless of what side the politics is on. The other point I would make is, under carbon removal, one thing that's not being considered in this calculation, and it's a 10% weighting, which should be higher, is congestion reduction. Traffic congestion is probably the highest contributor to, to carbon increases, and, uh, efforts that we have made, along with many partners, Scott County, State of Minnesota, and what we're trying to do traffic-wise, uh, to reduce congestion, is huge in reductions of carbon. And, and that was, obviously was not taken into consideration in your guys' findings. So, that's one area that should be reevaluated. The waste, we know is wrong. The renewable energy, obviously, we're doing better than most around us, along with our recycling, so our overall grade, from my perspective, is probably a B.
Actually, Eden Prairie and Minnetonka, who have als- also already had climate action plans and been putting in their, or putting in place things such as, um, a climate inheritance resolution, um, they only got a C.
What's climate inheritance?
Uh, climate inheritance resolution is kind of, it's what we passed around, it's just something that, like, you can put, you just kind of consider and put into, or can, how would you explain that?
It's a resolution simply stating that the city, the city officially recognizes that, uh, whatever troubles there may be in the current day, it will be left to the future generations to take care of.
Councilor Luce?
I just wanted to thank the students for a great presentation and their fellow students for the moral support that they gave them.
Instead, sustainability is important, obviously, and we, we can all individually play a part, and then collectively have an impact. Councilor Whiting?
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank you, Adam and Madison, for coming out and talking with us tonight. This is an important topic, I believe, and we may be able to adjust our grades here, I hope, with more information, and, and I want to point out to, I don't know, are you seniors this year, or?
Uh, yes, we have juniors, and, well, we partnered with our environmental club at the high school, so we have juniors and sophomores who are willing to keep up with all the work that we've been putting in.
No, this is a great project, uh, we are recently involved with the Academy's program at Shakopee High Schools, and I'm not sure we're ready to dive into that, you know, for you, your high school level year, but, um, maybe some of your other juniors and sophomores and things could get involved in that, and come together and, and learn how to present a, uh, this is a great plan, you know, I haven't looked at it yet, but, you know, uh, this is a great start, um, you know, maybe we can get together and work on that. I would offer, uh, I'm sure the staff would be glad to work with you, uh, to try and get this moved forward, if you want to put together a team, maybe we could do that and talk about it another time.
Thank you, Councilor Mokel.
I want to thank you for your presentation, and yes, there is disagreement on science, um, at the, even at the diocese, but I think that we can all, um, continue to move forward and, and think that we can all come together for the greater good. Now, the one thing you said about youth involvement, would anybody be opposed to staff looking into adding a student to our parking rec department, or parking rec board? Be something that we could do and start having those conversations, um, and then getting you those waste numbers, because that's important. And is there anything else that you would propose that we look at that we haven't talked about? Putting you on the spot.
No, um, I think, uh,
For right now.
Currently, the climate, uh, the report card covered, um, lots of things, and then, of course, what Lehman said about congestion and the other stuff that he brought up, should be also taken into account, but we can't think of anything right now that should be considered.
Councilor Luce?
Yeah, I would like to ask the whole council whether or not we could agree that staff should do whatever they can to assist them.
I think we can build some consensus, if we can put some, obviously, start with additional information for them to, um, to look at this report, and I know you guys have done a lot of work, but maybe additional information would be helpful as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She hand, uh, Mayor, she handed me a, a report that they have, and I will, there's not enough copies for everyone, so I will, um, scan it and email it to each one of you so that you'll see the information that they presented tonight in greater detail.
Councilor Luce?
Do we have agreement that staff should give them whatever assistance they can? I mean, do we have consensus?
Do you want to make a motion to direct staff, or?
Well, I don't know, we need a motion, I mean, it's just, we all agree, it should...
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, this is their project, not our project, and the, the assistance that we should be giving them is if, is to correct their data.
Well, more information, I guess, and that's what
That's what I'm meaning, I mean, they're, they're being stifled because of data privacy.
Right.
The city can help them by getting through that.
I would agree with the
I'm surprised, I'm surprised you didn't go to our staff and ask for some of this information.
Uh, we, we thought as like a public that it should be able, the public should be able to access this data by not going to the city council, that we should be able to just be able to easily access it, and we thought it would be, we thought it was acceptable for us to, since it was so hard for us to find it.
And I, and I believe them, data, daddy, data policies are state statute laws, are they not?
But certainly, we just received a non-report for, uh, a waste, and that, that's a public report that they gave to us, so
Right.
Staff would be happy, and I think that's fine.
I'd like to make a motion, then, that, you know, uh, staff provide them with whatever information that isn't s- s- touchy, or however you want to put it, um, and do whatever they can to get them the information they need. Mr. Mayor, as a matter of protocol, if I may, uh, to remind everybody
Can't take action during a recognized
What this particular
Right.
Time period on the agenda is for, we'll be more than happy to assist, uh, Assistant Administrator Nate Burkett just went to get a card, which he's now handing to the students, and we will be more than happy to do that, but, uh, as far as taking any formal actions, that's not what this particular time period is for.
I apologize about that, and that is fine, and contact staff, and they can provide you with some more information. Again, sustainability, uh, big topic, real important for all of us, and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you so much, Councilmember
Thank you.
If any other resident would like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll move ahead, then. Uh, no business, uh, remove consent, no public hearings. Next up, number eight, we would recess for the Economic Development Meeting. Councilor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to recess to the Economic Development Authority Meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for recess to the EDA. Uh, further discussion, 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 all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We stand now on recess.
We'll call the Shakopee Economic Development Authority Meeting for May 1st, 2018, to order. Please note the roll. Everybody should have a, an agenda. Ms. Mokel?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
You're second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Mokel, second by Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Consent agenda, EDA bill list and minutes, Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the, uh, EDA bill list and minutes on consent. Uh, we did have some, looks like a revised copy on the diocese today, and a few emails back and forth regarding some questions on it, so just to note that, but I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Whiting with the updated information on the desk, seconded by Mr. Luce?
No, I wanted to take a
Let's get a second first. Or you, you want to take something off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to take the bill list off, because I have a couple of questions.
All right. For the consent agenda, will be the minutes.
Yep.
I'll find that motion, seconded by Mr. Mars.
Mr. President, I'll make a second.
Any discussion on the motion to approve the EDA minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Luce, you had a question on the bill list?
Uh, yes, uh, repairs to the Doggy Doo's building, uh, electric company was brought in for a little over $400 on a couple of different projects, by the way it looks. Uh, generally, from my understanding and my working knowledge, that when someone rents a building, they are responsible for all repairs, I'm trying to figure out why we're paying for repairs on a building that we're renting.
Mr. Kerski?
Mr. President, members, so as part of the acquisition of the building, um, some problems were identified with the building, we withheld money at the closing to do those repairs. The items included, um, improper electrical that was not safe, there's still another, I think we spent about another $1,000 this week fixing the last piece of electrical, um, the circuits were not properly installed, and I think we, 17,000 or 18,000 dollars was withheld, um, towards repairs at the closing. Um, the next big item is the roof, which was not properly sealed, which the owner agreed to rebate us back the cost of those repairs. So at the closing, those were all counted in. So I, I don't think it's fair, as, as the city is a building owner, to basically be collecting 4100 dollars a month and have the building, which was leaking, was a fire hazard, and some of the stuff wasn't working, so when we spoke to the property owner that we purchased it from, we said, "We need to back out those things at the closing because it's not fair to be selling us a building that needs those repairs."
Mr. Kerski, thanks for your explanation, when you speak, can you speak closer into the mic for us, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Luce?
Uh, I do have one other question, uh, at least, that's, uh, uh, part of the Doggy Doo's agreement, is that a triple net lease, then, from here on in, once the building's up to, uh, proper building codes, then they will pay for everything from there on?
Mayor, once, and board members, once the building is sound and safe, they'll be responsible for everything else.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, bills, Mr. Luce?
Uh, yeah, I make a motion, well, yeah, make a motion to approve the EDA bills in the amount of 13,671 dollars and 65 cents.
Seconded by Mr. Mars, any discussion?
That's, that's, that's not correct.
Mr. Reynolds?
The wrong number.
Yep.
13, 671, 65?
The three
No, there's a revised schedule on the diocese.
On the revised schedule, it's 390,177.15.
390,000.
So let's use the
The revised
Handout that was on the desk.
Okay.
Okay, I'll revise the number to 390,177 dollars and 15 cents.
And I'm the second, and I accept it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, it, Mr. Luce and Mr. Mars. Any discussion? Give me a second here, so... So the cover letter on the memo, where'd he go, Mr. Kerski, the cover letter on the memo is just being specific to certain items within the attached, this attached is 13,671 per the memo. This, what was on the table is 390,000 for a, you know, substantial difference of 300 and
The difference, members, is the acquisition of the property was not included on that list because it doesn't come out of the check register, it's a different account, an asset account.
Okay.
So if you look, there's 300 and some of a thousand dollars, it's property held, I believe, what it's listed as, so it's not really an expense, but that was how it got put on the ledger, and it was left out
Considered an asset, right, Darren?
Right. Correct, Commissioners, it was, uh,
Yep.
It's, it's an asset, whereas most of our expenses are an ex- an expense, which are in a different account category, so this report didn't have the parameters wide enough to grab
Yep, this, this, okay, this, this is what I was asking in my questions to staff earlier in the week, uh, by email, it's the properties we acquired, the Doggy Doo's, the parking lot, the house, and the other
Yes.
Assets that have, city have owned over the years, behind it, and so on and so forth, okay, got it. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Any general business coming before us? Seeing none? No reports? Motion to adjourn would be in order, Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer a motion to adjourn the EDA till June fifth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven P.M.
And Mr. Lewis, you second?
Yep.
Any discussion on adjourn? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, we're adjourned.
We will reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for May first, two thousand and eighteen. We've completed our EDA meeting. We're gonna move on to ten A, or ten A one, to set a public hearing for a redevelopment district, number nineteen, and, Mr. Kersky?
Mayor and Council, this is merely setting a date in, um, the future for that public meeting. At the June EDA meeting, you will see a presentation from the potential developer, and we will hopefully have the financial numbers run by then from Springsteen.
Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R twenty eighteen dash zero five seven, calling for a public hearing on the tax increment financing plan for tax increment finance district number nineteen, and a modification of the redevelopment plan for the Minnesota River Valley Housing and Redevelopment District number one.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Mokel. Further discussion, and, uh, Counselor Lehman?
So when is the public hearing date?
July third.
July third?
Yep.
And we're gonna have the information when? Sorry.
Mr. Kersky, welcome back.
You will have a presentation at the June, um, City Council slash EDA meeting.
Which is our.
So that, by the time we get to the public hearing, any questions that come up in June hopefully can be answered for the July public hearing.
So I have a motion and a second on the table. Oh, I apologize, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I just would, uh, like to see a little more public, uh, interest in these, uh, hearings, especially for tanks, tax increment financing, 'cause it affects all of the residents of Shakopee, and I just hope there's a better turnout than we've had seen in the past.
Okay, well, that's where we're setting the public hearing, and I will have some information in our early June meeting, and then followed up by a public hearing. So there will be two meetings, basically in regard to this, is that correct? And one will be a, a public hearing for testimony. Counselor Lehman?
Just to make sure I'm clear, we gave direction that we wanted the best, the top three proposals to come back, and we had minimal proposals, is this correct?
You, you can have one proposal, not minimal.
That's the only proposal you have.
Okay.
So that proposal, you will see, um, they've been working on it, working on their numbers. Between now and then, we've contracted, as we discussed at the couple of meetings ago with TerraCon, there's environmental issues that were found on all this property in this area, so TerraCon's currently under contract, they're gonna be, now that we don't have any more snow, they're gonna go out and drill, uh, and identify exactly what the environmental issues are, and there's also some concern about bedrock in that area, and so they will identify a profile, so then when we get to the June meeting, we'll know exactly what's going on in the site.
Counselor Lewis?
I noticed in the map that we were provided with in, um, some, our, for their material, that the gentleman with the house on the corner, on the northeast side, is included. Have we come to some kind of an agreement with them?
It, um, Mayor and Council members, you will see an agreement at the June meeting. We've given them a draft, um, we had the property appraised. They're gonna core their property, they've given us permission for access, so we'll make sure there's no environmental issues there also.
I think that's why the email with the map said it was preliminary, because, uh, all this information is not ready to go yet, and, uh, we did see a map, and drew the question that you had, exactly, so, but I think, uh, we're gonna see some more things here, more information, more complete, and more information.
So Mayor and Council, currently there are six parcels that would be included tentatively in that redevelopment area.
Further questions? Counselor Lewis? Further discussion, 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 all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Um, before us is the city bill list for our review. Counselor Lehman?
I had one, if I can find it, there it is. Uh, page nineteen, second from the bottom, Moss and Barnett. Telecommunications, attorney fees, eighteen fifty-six, fifty.
Yes, sir, I believe that that is our audit, that we, uh, have, uh, we've asked, uh, Moss and Barnett to conduct a preliminary audit of Comcast Cable, uh, to make sure that the numbers are what they should be.
Okay.
Uh, and so that's what that is.
All right. It's just one that slipped to me, otherwise I had good back and forth getting all my answers.
No, it's a typical, typical na- uh, name that we normally don't see.
Correct.
Um, more, less?
Well, that's it.
Okay, uh, bill list for our review. The next up would be our, uh, liaison reports, Counselor Member Lehman?
Uh, attended a school board meeting, what was that, the twenty-third, and, uh, Judy Tomzac was appointed to the vacant pos- seat for Mary Romanski's resignation. Lot of development discussion of the high school, change orders, um, end of the day, I guess they were under the roughly two percent of, to the project change order, uh, which apparently is good in the industry, um, not my expert area, but that's what they were saying. Um, a lot of it was reviewed from the prior meeting, looking at, uh, budgets and cost savings and reorganizations and stuff like that, so, pretty standard, standard meeting, that's the highlights out of it. That's all I have.
All right, um, on four eighteen, I met with, uh, our audit people to discuss, uh, uh, they asked, uh, questions of me, um, the council. We discussed, uh, that we went through the, the P-card procedure, um, so that was standard procedure of a standard audit every year. On four twenty-four, uh, toured Shutterfly, um, the technology that they have in that building is, uh, is amazing, that if you went back to even five or ten years, uh, the, what they're doing now is gonna, you know, light years ahead of what they're doing. We saw some of the integration that they had with Lifetouch, that they recently bought, um, there's a lot of, uh, synergy coming together in that, so that was great. Shutterfly is doing very, very well. Um, then as last weekend, I attended the Minnesota Mayors Association, um, just a couple of comments on that. There was a great presentation by Greg Hayes, the emergency management, uh, uh, staff member there from the Shakopee Meadowackin Sue community. Uh, spoke for over two hours, um, great, great, uh, presentation on emergency management. I did talk with our, uh, Bill Reynolds, and we will see that coming this summer, we will have a presentation here. Uh, Perro, Minnesota, uh, northwestern Minnesota, a town of thirty-one hundred people. They have an employment base of forty-four hundred people, um, uh, Bond Guard's Cheese, Tuffy's Dog Food, uh, Barrel of Fun Potato Chips. These are major, major companies. Um, matter of fact, we talked about the trains in our community, and, uh, back before the one sixty-nine, uh, uh, expansion there, we used to have trucks right down our downtown. Uh, this community has, uh, over four hundred semis coming and going each day. They have over sixty trains going right alongside their town. Per day, actually, that number is down from over a hundred during the peak of the oil boom. Um, little community, thirty-one hundred, uh, they did pass a forty-three million dollar, uh, expand, uh, referendum for their school, uh, to build a new high school. Um, the issue's up there, traffic, affordable housing, not finding enough workers, sounds similar. Um, we're not unique, I heard it from mayors all over. Um, the LM, LMC did put out a, uh, uh, a, a talk about a local control resolution, which I believe this body passed last year, um, they've provided a framework for a new one that, uh, we'll see for discussion here in a couple of weeks. Um, Minnesota, uh, MSP Regional, um, gave out a dashboard and spoke about their dashboard, this is big picture in the Minnesota. Um, but the Minnesota Mayors Association, uh, did very well, and, uh, interesting to see a small community with an economic base that strong, um, and, uh, pretty interesting in a small community, so, that, uh, my report. And also, we did have, uh, before us, a Reverend Samuel Pond statue fundraising event, uh, Bingo at the Shakopee Brew Hall on May sixteenth at six-thirty. Would love the public to come out and support this, uh, great, uh, venture.
Who doesn't like bingo and beer?
It's a fundraiser.
May sixteenth at six-thirty at the brew hall, all right.
Thanks.
Uh, Counselor Whiting?
Oh, thank you. Uh, on the twenty-fifth, I had the MVTA, uh, I passed you out a strategic plan, each one of you has that, uh, that's, uh, something we've been working on. Uh, one of the components in there is the public-private partnerships aspect, and, and, uh, that's actually, um, been brought up quite a bit at the legislature, uh, because of the Shakopee, um, businesses that are involved in that with, uh, um, Canterbury and Am- Amazon and others that are, are, uh, working with that. Um, that's really, uh, increased that whole suburb-to-suburb, uh, demonstration project, and I do have a little, uh, PowerPoint, uh, I can give to Mr. Reynolds, and if you, if you're interested, he can email that out to you, it talks about, uh, just the partnerships that are involved in that. Um, the other big thing that they're discussing is, uh, thirty-five W, uh, that's a, that's gonna be a big problem for anybody heading downtown for multiple years. Mr. Lehman's talked about that, so, uh, MVTA's working on a big project, uh, marketing project to say, hey, take the bus. I mean, you can take the bus to the Mall of America, jump on a train and go to St. Paul, or jump, shoot over downtown Minneapolis. Um, so that's gonna be a part of their marketing plan. Um, the ridership report was given, uh, ridership was down a little bit. Some of the things they thought might be involved is, uh, people were avoiding downtown for the Super Bowl week. Um, a few other issues with a lot of snow days and things that were keeping people, people's kids home, so they weren't going to work, but, uh, so just a little bit down, not much, um, but that's all I have to report on.
Thank you, Counselor Whiting. A question, uh, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, um, just to follow up on page eight of what he handed out from, uh, MVTA. Under the, under increase and strengthening partnerships, there's a item that caught my attention, it's ensure connectivity with transportation organizations to meet the needs. This is something that I've been talking about for at least ten years. It's, you know, and when Mr. Whiting is talking about the thirty-five W construction season being multi-year, and taking a couple of lanes out, it's gonna be open, it's just gonna be restricted. Um, the importance of having our buses connecting with other service providers is gonna be critical, and, and I've been saying this for years, but this is something that should be happening regardless. You know, where ours should be connecting with the Burnsville Transit Station, the Eden Prairie Stran- Transit Station, so, because they're all going different places, and it broadens, totally broadens the riders' horizons of where they can get to, um, and that's a critical link, and it's great to see that in there, to be honest with you.
That Mall of America connection is a hub to pretty much anywhere, and, uh...
Well, but I'm saying if you can't connect to the ones close to you, and, and we're talking about connecting to one farther out, we should be connecting to these other ones and that one, because maybe one of these other ones will get you there too, um, it's just really good to see that in there.
And part of the committee assignments is that, uh, public-private partnerships, which I'm sitting on that committee, so, uh, I'll push that forward and see what we can do with that.
Great questions, great comments. Counselor Mokel?
I had SDA on Thursday, um, April twenty-sixth, and they had two presenters from, um, Scott County. One was, um, they went over their two, um, community conversations they held, one, both in November, and about the call to action for a strategic plan to end child abuse and neglect, and, um, some of their community strengths and existing resources, they said was fish, responsive myth, responsiveness of faiths communities, innovative county services, support through, through CAP, um, strong educational system, collaboration between agencies and community ga- gatherings. Um, however, their gaps and barriers from these two, um, programs, or two presentations was, um, this changing Scott County demographics and need for increased attention to culturally responsive services, um, the need for more affordable housing options, including local homeless shelter, gaps in continuum of community-based services, um, lack of follow-up care, and the need for increased community engagement. Um, the second presenter spoke to us about all the services that are offered through, um, Scott County, um, mental health, and it was important to note that they don't turn anyone away for, for cost, and in fact, she said with their sliding scale, there's very rarely people will pay a fee, um, with their insurance, even with insurance, so it was interesting to note, so, that is all I have.
Counselor, thank you very much. Um, now, on to Bill Reynolds with the administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, this Saturday, uh, big day, uh, for Public Works, uh, and, uh, our partnership with Bridging. Uh, we had our annual cleanup day.
I was there.
And, and, and I did see, uh, uh, Counselor, uh, Whiting in line, uh, as was, I think, half of the city at one point. Uh, but it was really great, uh, you know, Public Works has this down to a science, uh, both myself and Assistant Administrator Burkett were, uh, they're walking around, uh, seeing how things were going, and, uh, uh, four hundred and thirty-two vehicles came through, uh, for Bridging, which is, uh, the charity that collects, uh, usable furniture, uh, we were able to fill one semi, and then two vans also on top of that. So, which was a lot more than we did last year, uh, bridging in partnership with the Rotary, which I was also, uh, working with them. Uh, so that was just a great job by, uh, Public Works all the way around, um, you know, that, that program is, is tremendous, and, and is just a, a well-used program. Uh, had a meeting, uh, this Sa- or, excuse me, this morning with our Parks and Recreation Department, uh, they're very excited. Uh, where we're headed in the future, uh, we'll be bringing to you, uh, in the next couple of months, a plan to reorganize the department, uh, with the priorities that this council has, uh, determined that, uh, we should be looking at, so, uh, uh, again, Nate has been working with, uh, the Park and Recs Department to, uh, put that together, and, uh, I think you'll be pleasantly and surprised as not only how much, uh, work that they have done, the department has done, uh, the leadership of that department has done in this regards, but also about, uh, some of the things that they're thinking about that I don't think even we were thinking about at the time, so that's some pretty exciting stuff. Uh, for, uh, also, we just put out the City of Shakopee Road Projects twenty-eighteen map. Uh, it is also online, not only on our website, but also, uh, on our local newspaper. Uh, so if you're driving along and you see vehicles out there and you wonder what's going on, it's all right here. Covering everything from reconstruction, overlay, crack seal, seal coat, sewer pipe rehab, beurling trail rehab, beurling drive extension, Twelfth Avenue Trail construction, and Canterbury Fourth Avenue reconstruction. The one things that aren't, aren't here, then aren't on here are the, uh, county projects. County Road eighty-three, uh, that's a big one, uh, that will be taking place this summer and is also in, uh, uh, but that is not on here, but all of the city projects are. Uh, and finally, uh, both Nate and I will be, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday at the, uh, Minnesota City Managers Association Annual Meeting in Nisswa. So, uh, we will be available by phone, uh, if any emergencies happen, Darren actually is going to be in charge of things, and, uh, so feel free to give him a call and, uh, make sure he's on his toes.
See you win awards, and then you're in charge of it.
Right, right.
You would call the City Hall number to get ahold of Darren, then?
Yes, that's correct.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, what was the date that the party starts at City Hall?
Something, yeah.
Counselor Lewis?
I just got a couple of things I'd like to bring up here. Um, I had a friend in from Arkansas this weekend, and they have the same job problem down there. They said they cannot find enough workers. He's sixty-six years old, and they put him back to work, you know, they just, you know, they offered him money he couldn't refuse. Um, Friday night, I went to the hospital gala, uh, great fundraiser, uh, good time was had by all. I believe a lot of money was, uh, raised, I don't have asked for, uh, accounting to see, you know, how much they received, but I haven't received that yet. I did make some good, uh, contacts there, uh, the Benedictine Group, they had some people there, and they were not aware of our CAPS Academy, or the new academies that, uh, the school was putting out, so, uh, I put them in contact with Michael Morris from the hospital, and, uh, they had a good conversation on hopefully, you know, working together on, on that project, and then they were hoping that, uh, they can get some working, workability with Common Bond, because the housing will be right across from them, and, uh, you know... And, you know, being that it's lower, somewhat subsidized housing, would be great for their people, so. If anybody wants to see the booklet from the gala, they can take a look at that. It tells all the donors and everything else. Like I said, it was a great night. Mystic Lakes New Event Center, I know some of us have seen it, maybe not everybody, but it's over the top, so. Counselor Whiting?
Just one more comment, we talked about the cleanup day. And I don't, I want to make sure we can check the facts on this, but out at the Shakopee Medwakaton Organics Recycling Facility, known as the ORF, I believe Shakopee citizens can bring their leaves and yard waste there on Sundays for free.
That's correct.
Eight to two.
Eight to two, and I believe that if you have branches and wood, they'll take that free-
Leaves.
Any, well, the branches, the tree trimmings, they'll take any time for free. So if you didn't have an opportunity to make it down to the cleanup day, there's that option too.
Yeah, and absolutely. And the mayor and I, along with Chairman Vig, and the mayor of Prior Lake, and the administrators of both the SMSC and Prior Lake, were all scheduled, not this last weekend, but the weekend before, to work out at the ORF with, to, to help collect some of that stuff. But since we still have snow on the ground, we decided that we probably should not do that. And so that was canceled, and that will be rescheduled at some point in the future.
So is that open through the month of May?
Month of May, yes.
It is, yep.
Well, no, some great information from that. And cleanup day, I met with Mr. Reynolds the other day, and I said, there was a line to Spencer. That's kind of the old mark over the years. You know, we've been doing this for forever. And he said, no, Mayor, this year, it was to homes. So I thought, you know, that's a, if people want to clean up and get stuff taken care of, that's the way to do it. So, great resources we have in our community. If there's no other issues before this board, Counselor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to May fifteenth, twenty eighteen, at seven P.M.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Luce. Further discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned at seven fifty.